Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this November 10, 2010 School Board Budget Work Session. I'd like to start by calling the meeting to order and going with the President's Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It's great to have a full complement of the board here tonight and, oh, almost, Chet's not here.
Not yet.
Hopefully, he'll be here shortly. And good to see you, both of you, looking much better than I had heard.
Yes.
So, anyway, I am very happy to have our first look here at this document that you prepared, which already, I can tell, is going to be much easier to work with with the organization of our budget, so.
I'd like to take people through it a little bit and orient them to it and then probably turn it over to Matt to start with technology, if that's okay.
That'd be terrific, perfect.
I've only been to one meeting, and I have to apologize for that. One of my misses was because of my 40th wedding anniversary, which took priority, frankly. And then the other one was I've had my turn with the flu, so it's good to be here. But the first meeting that I was at was the one with the elementary school presentation. It was my first exposure to the binder, working off of two sets of counting and trying to mesh it all together. And I found it frustrating, and talking with some of you, I think you found it frustrating too. So what I've done since then is convert everything that's in this binder to this document that you see here. So as far as, certainly, I hope you buy into, I think those who looked at it will buy into, that there's no real need to continue with the binder, that everything is embedded in this, in this document. This is the way that I'm frankly used to working, and I think it makes it something that's very usually friendly for all of us that are trying to process a budget. But to me, also, easier to read and more transparent for the public that's trying to look at our budget and understand what it is we're buying. So what I'd like to do is walk you through a little bit with it, orient you to you, orient you through it, and then turn it over to Matt to talk about technology in the district. If you turn to page one, you can see in the introduction, there are a number of things that I think should be common to a budget statement, and that is the mission statement, the goals of the district, talk a little bit about contents of the system, the accounting system, explaining functions, because functions is really crucial. We need to understand what is in each function. And then some basic assumptions, which I'll explain more when we get there, and then some expense comparisons, because it's good to start out in the beginning with, what's our bottom line? And where are we today? Then what I, my view of organizing a budget is by cost center. So as you see, we really have three, the two schools and the SAU Board. And then within each cost center, every function that's appropriate for that cost center. And as you go through these books, you will see that there will be the budget for that function, and then all the descriptors appropriate to those accounts. So there's none of this flipping back and forth. You have all in one page or a set of pages. You get to see the account, the account history, and, well, the explanation that came from principals and directors as to what we are looking to do with that. If you turn, turn the page down at the bottom, it's an expanded set over, I think, what you may have seen the last time, but these, at the bottom of page three, are all of the functions that are contained within our budget. So it makes it a little bit easier. In the past, for example, you've been dealing with educational media. And yet, to me, it's more appropriate to break it out as library, what are we doing with library? What are we doing in technology? And so that's, that's, you'll see more functions being identified in here. If you turn the page, and again, this is trying to be a document that communicates beyond us to even the greater community, there's an explanation there of every function. So it says what kinds of things ought to be contained in those segments of the budget. Basic assumptions is really an important piece, because these are basic building blocks of the budget that are pervasive, and it doesn't make sense to have it in every, every discussion, every line. If we know that, for example, health insurance is going up 15 percent, we say it once, right here. I don't say it further on in the document. Everybody who's read this knows that that's the case. So what I'd like to do is take a moment just to walk through these. You've perhaps already heard these in presentations. First of all, teacher salaries. We have a contract, so they're set at the appropriate step and column. There are salaries for non-union personnel that are set according to district pay scales. And then there are some individual contracts of administrators, and we've budgeted a 3 percent amount at each line to build towards performance raises. Secondly, is in the area of grants and how that is handled. The budget documents you've seen in the past have, have, have contained the position and the money, but then subtracted the money out. And so in this document, it merely talks about the positions and identifies them as grant-funded, but the money doesn't appear in there, because it is a wash, if you will, because the grant is really picking up that expense. It's not district money. Number three, there's a sick day buyback benefit for a number of employees throughout this budget. It's only being said once here. Health insurance currently is projected at a 15 percent increase. I'm not sure that that's the final word on it, to be honest with you, and as soon as I can find out better information, you'll know about it. Dental insurance in this budget is projected as a 3 percent. This is a good point for me to say to you, this budget reflects this binder. That's why I termed it as initial proposal. Since this went out to you, I received word that the dental insurance is actually going up four and a half percent. So the next time that we, we will be visiting this, it'll be adjustments such as that. So the bottom line goes up for dental, and maybe it goes down for some other things that we're not doing. So again, I'm just showing you here what was in the initial budget. The health insurance, I'm sorry, the life insurance line describes the ratio that is there. That's for most people. I think there are some employees that have a $50,000 life insurance policy. Long-term disability in many places throughout the budget, it's the same formula throughout the budget. Employee assistance program, same thing, $26 per employee has been budgeted. FICR is simply a percentage calculation, 7.65 percent. There are some significant increases in here for retirement, and I'm not sure that it's been explained properly yet. Certainly, in the data that I saw, it wasn't. But, so let me go through this. The, for teachers, the current rate, this year's rate, is 8.02 percent of salary. For next year, that rises to 9.07 percent. For other employees, who also then participate in the retirement system, it's, there's difference. This year, 9.16 percent, and then it rises next year to 11.09 percent. So those are percentages. That, that is definite information. I don't anticipate that changing at all from the documents that I've looked at, but I'm not sure you got those percentages in the past. Unemployment insurance, this is how we calculate it, the .59 percent of the first 10,000. Workers' compensation, .3 percent of salary, and again, that's throughout the budget. And the few places that there is electricity, a 5 percent increase has been projected. So then, those are the basic assumptions. That pervades, that pervades this whole budget. If you turn the page, what I, what I've provided for you here are some expense comparisons, organized vertically by function, first of all. So all the functions, and then running across the scale of the three cost centers, the elementary school, junior, senior high school, the SAU Board, what's the total? What percent of that total? So, in other words, regular education is approximately 38 percent of our budget. Special education, approximately 22 percent, a little over, 22 percent of the budget, and so forth. Then you get a column that says, what are we, where are we with this year's budget in that particular function? And so what's the percent of increase? So you can see where it's stayed relatively slow growth and other places where it's jumped up. And hopefully, as you read through this document, you're going to see the reasons why it took those big bumps. If you look at the bottom line to that chart, requested total budget, $15,238,787, and that's an increase over this year of 6.5 percent. The other one idea is they took the same data and organized it differently into the objects. What's the growth of salaries? What's the growth of benefits and so forth? And so you can see all of the percentages that are there. Obviously, still comes the same bottom line, same increase. And the last thing that I thought you'd find valuable was a breakout of benefits, because there's so many and they're varied. So now, in that third chart, you get an analysis of how have benefits increased or changed this year compared to this proposal?
Jim?
Yes?
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
On the benefit side, is that paid by the district, or is that a portion of that also paid by the employee?
This shows the district portion, example, health insurance.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions up to there? Anything? Yes, sure.
In the summary on the page before that?
Yes.
Talk about the teacher's salaries and all that?
Yes.
On the basis of assumptions. Perhaps, I was looking to see what portion of this is part of the teacher's contract. You know, like, FICR is not, and some of the other stuff is not, but the salaries, some type of ASTRO that would indicate this is based on a contractual or a contract basis, teacher's contract. So we know that as we're going through, we can't touch that, because it's part of a contract.
Yeah. I, I mean, I-
No, it's okay. I mean, I just-
Yeah, I understand. I understand what you're saying. You're saying teacher's contract vis a vis other obligations, because we do have other pay scales that we've committed to and individual contracts. That's, that has some degree of flexibility, obviously. But, but there are pay scales, for example, for non-union, non-classified or classified personnel, that even though there's not a contract, there is a pay scale that we do follow for those people.
All right, do you have a question?
Yes, sure.
Page six, the expense comparison, the last column says percentage of increase. Is that supposed to be percentage increase over the previous year? Or percentage of the overall?
The far right-hand column?
Yeah.
That's increase over, overlap, over the previous year.
Right. The word of is implying to me it's 5 percent of the 100 percent increase. So just, you see what I mean? Percentage of increase.
You mean, like, for example, salaries?
Yeah.
Is that the 4.9?
It's percentage of the increase, percentage, the increase from year to year in a percentage representation.
Yeah, I mean, I take that as, how much have salaries increased from last year to this? That's how I read it. I'm not sure if I'm-
So maybe to illustrate it, three columns in from the right, percent of total. If you add those percentages up-
That is 100.
-believing that adds to 100.
Right.
And that's the same column header that appears on the furthest to the right column.
Well, percent of total is percent of the total budget. I mean, for example, salaries is 57 percent, 24.3 for benefits, so you're about 81 percent purely salary and benefits. That, that's what I tried to communicate there. Whereas the far right-hand column is, what's the percentage increase over this current year? Okay? If there's another wording you want me to use on behalf of you.
I just, to me, when it says percentage of increase, if the increase in the budget was $100,000, this is saying that 5 percent of that increase is due to salaries.
Yes, so just take the word, if the word of wasn't on there-
Take it out.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
I hear you. Okay, good suggestion.
We don't want someone to-
Now I get, now I get your point. I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
No, I didn't say it clearly.
Question? So this does not reflect the amount of funds expended in the previous year, which is significantly lower than the amount budgeted?
This is the amount that was in the approved budget.
Right, but it does not represent the amount that was actually expended.
Well, it's only current year. We're still living the current year. We haven't fully expended it.
Well-
The current year ends June 30th.
If you look back on the last page of the budget that's in the binder, there's, there are some differences about amount expended as opposed to amount approved.
And that should indicate the prior year's budget.
Right.
Not over current.
Last year's.
Right.
Yes. Yeah.
The prior year's budget.
Is not on this chart.
Is not on this chart.
It's not on this chart.
So that doesn't give us the complete figures.
I think I understand it. I mean, if we saw year-to-date-
Yeah.
Yes. That would be different.
That would give it to you.
Yeah. Okay.
We spent $8,000 last year, year-to-date. We spent $9,000 year-to-date.
So try and get some previous-year data in there. Okay, I get it.
At this point, it'll only be four months, because you know, this year started July.
Right, for this year. But you would have actuals for last year that was in there. That's right.
And just year-to-date figures.
Right.
And some things, like salaries, are very predictable, hopefully.
Right.
But some things, we can encumber money, but there are expenses that we wouldn't incur until, say, the summer when we were doing sort of a repair.
I think in particular, that 81 percent of the budget number you talked about, it would be very interesting to see last year versus this year.
Okay. Okay, I'll get that for you.
Jim, do you have that? I may not be understanding this correctly. Like, on page eight, if you turn there, I'm just sort of flipping through, you do have last year's budget and last year's actuals, so I'm assuming that's what-
I don't have them in the summary, I think, is what I hear them saying.
Oh, okay, so-
I have them on the, on the breakout by function. Yes, I do.
So they are within the document, but-
Within the document, but they're not in the summary, is what they say. So I get that, yeah. Okay, page seven is an introduction to the first cost center. What I do there is give you the breakdown for that, for that school, in this case, the elementary school, and then some budget highlights. What are the takeaways, or what are the driving forces of change within that school's budgets? And will, you know, and you've, you've already met, gone over the elementary school, but these are some of the highlighted things. If you turn the page to page eight, for the schools, I also give what enrollment they've projected for the following year. And then what you see on page eight and nine is really what is the meat of this report, and that is the budget of the function, and then all the explanations that go with it. And that incorporates all the explanations that were part of, of the binder, that were part of the two different versions you were dealing with within the binder, as well as additional information that, that as we were preparing this as an administrative team, that people were able to incorporate. So let me do a couple more pieces in this, in this budget, in this booklet, and then turn it over to Matt. If you turn to page 57, you get to the appendices. I'm not sure where I'd heard it, but, but I'd heard said, they like to see the budget in order of objects. So lump all the objects together, and so that's what I've provided here, is an object-level budget. I haven't put totals there, but you have that data organized in that fashion for your, for your review. Turn to page 70. The last piece, you've had the glossary in the past. We'll try and expand on that. I think that could be a better section in the future. But something you've not seen before are organizational charts. There are four in here, one dealing with the leadership structures that I incorporate in the district, another dealing with the program, structures that lead various programs, technology, special ed, curriculum, business. And then the last two are the organizational charts for both of our schools. You see numbers in there in some instances, that's the number of employees.
Where did you say that you don't have a grand total of how many employees?
No, I don't have that. It's done by, in the organizational chart, how many teachers, how many pairs, how many special ed teachers, and so forth. So, so this is pretty comprehensive booklet. I realize there's some, some things we can do to improve on it. And, and as, in my experience, where we move forward, we really have two prevailing interests. One are, what are we doing to the educational program as we make cuts or as we enhance it? And what's the bottom line? And so I don't intend to be producing one of these every time we meet. To me, what it is, is a simple one or two pages that, that says, okay, dental insurance went up to 4.5 percent, here's the impact in the accounts. One of the salaries was calculated wrong, here's the adjustment to get it right. And things of that sort. Decided not to buy new cafeteria tables for the elementary kitchen, cafeteria, so, so you cut that money out. So that you can then see what you've done programmatically to everything that's in this, but also then see what's happened to the bottom line. And it would seem to me that as we do that, the summary budget is something that I produce for you again. It's very easy to do. So that's hopefully how you agree. That's how I'd like to move forward on this. I think you'll find it very, very useful.
I love it already.
Good.
Thank you for your work.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Yeah. You're welcome very much. Thank you. So now I'll turn it over to Matt. He's going to talk about technology, and then, and then we'll finish up with SAU and Board budgets, okay?
Great.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
Good evening. Hi. I don't know if any of all of you know me. I'm Matt Seaton. I'm the Technology Director for the School District. I believe the first cost center is on, for technologies, on page 18. Following the table of the accounts are the descriptions of each account. We can start off with the first account. All technology accounts start with 2230. The following number is the location. In this case, 1 stands for the elementary school. And the final and last number is the function. 125 is a staff or salary. This is the PC technician, and he maintains, analyzes, troubleshoots, and repairs computer hardware and software systems for the school district. You can see that he is, he has been put in for a 3 percent raise for next year. There is a decrease in the total amount of salary over last year, though. Questions?
Can you say, technology technician?
Mm-hmm.
The one indicates the elementary.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have other section here for other parts of the high school and?
Yeah, well, each, each cost center, the elementary, the high school, and the SAU, he's the only, he's the only district technician. We only have one.
Oh, okay, for the whole?
Yeah, for the whole district. He spends half of his time at the elementary school, the other half of the time at the junior, senior high.
So when we see this, I don't know, I guess maybe the one, when you said elementary, I should have a comma plus a two that is all over.
Yeah, he is. Previously, in the 2008, 2009, we did have two technicians. That third position was removed, and so we just maintained the position that was at the elementary school. But he, he does, he does serve the whole entire school district.
It would, it would seem to me, for clarity, as, as we move forward from today, that that really ought to be budgeted in, with a zero, not, not one. I mean, it's really a district-wide position, and that, that's a better place to put it.
I think the other thing that might have been helpful, this is great, by the way. This is really good. I like the way you've done this. This is far better than this.
I know.
But another area probably would be the percentage of what that increase is. You just said it was 3 percent, but if it was visual, we could see what the increase was.
Yeah. I kind of run out of, run out of room. It's a matter of, how many percentages do you really need?
But you can also tell, though, from the previous budgeted year, that there was more than almost a 25 percent decrease for that salary of that position. So I, I mean, you can see that in the last year budget column. It was previously 44, 5, 6, 2. Okay. Account 2230, 300, this is outside contracted support. We use this with district applications, systems, hardware, and essential services. This includes support for our firewall, our email system, our network infrastructure, server and network operating systems. This, we also use this count to have expertise help us with implementing new systems. Some of these systems include storage, collaboration, applications, and other systems that are part of the foundation of a 21st century education environment. All contracted support will be handled by the respective vendor or the qualified business partner of that vendor.
There's, sorry to interrupt. In the past, I'm recalling, particularly with the technology budget, there are some things that have a component in the elementary school and the junior, senior high school and the SAU. And I'm recalling there were maybe, it was split up into two fifths in each building, and then one fifth at the SAU.
Yeah. The, I call it the rule of six. Fifths is close, is close.
I almost remembered everything.
Yeah, so a lot of these counts are repeated in each cost center, and they're broken up into, one-sixth of the total cost is placed at the SAU level for district-wide. Three-sixths of the cost, or half of it, is placed on the junior and senior high, and two-sixths of it is placed at the elementary school. It's because when, you know, if I'm, if I'm purchasing antivirus software, I'm not writing three POs to McAfee saying, here is for the elementary, here's for the junior, senior high, here's for the SAU. I purchased licensing for the entire school district. So, but the costs are broken down based really on student population of those, of those two buildings, so.
So that rule of six is, is in this?
Pretty much throughout the whole entire part. There are some accounts that you'll notice that don't exist in all the cost centers, and that rule of six doesn't apply.
Thanks.
430, these are accounts associated with equipment repair. There has been an increase. But most of these items are consumable and have unpredictable failure times. Currently, at the moment, 0 percent of our hardware is under any form of warranty. However, we offset that by using a three-year purchasing cycle, which helps ensure that none of our equipment exceeds nine years in age. And in technology terms, that, that is pretty old. That's dinosaur. So, but we do, we're very smart with the purchasing of the systems and the vendors that we choose. It also allows us to create a homogeneous hardware environment. And this actually is cost savings, because it allows us to predict failure rates and other trends in, in the equipment that we're using. Also, there's cost savings due to volume purchasing. It's a lot cheaper to buy 100 new computers and to piecemeal it and buy 30 at a time. I get better pricing when I buy in bulk.
Matt, if I could just say, when you purchase these computers, are you purchasing through some type of consortium where there's a larger, you know, maybe other schools purchasing at the same time?
There is a consortium through New Hampshire, but they only deal with one vendor, and that's Dell.
Oh, that's Dell.
And I've always been able to beat their pricing using, basically shopping, I call vendors. Most of our hardware are at the point where we're almost 100 percent IBM. And I've, we've had very good luck with them. Usually what happens is I look at the quality of the hardware I'm going to be getting- Usually what happens is I look at the quality of the hardware I'm going to be getting, such as the system specifications, type of processor, memory, stuff like that, and look at how expandable is that? You know, if I get something now with lower amounts of memory in the future, is this going to be something I can upgrade and continue its use and expand its lifetime? And I've also chosen to go with vendors that have local resources available. We have certified refurbished parts warehouses for IBM within miles of here. One of them's in Dover. There's several in Massachusetts. So getting parts or repair mission-critical hardware is very, is very easy.
So to purchase these computers, it's cheaper to purchase outside of the consortium?
That's what I found.
Educational market and then to purchase in the consumer market?
It is. Because there's more competition. With the consortium, they know who their customer is and they have a fixed amount of customers. And they're only dealing with one vendor, so there really isn't a lot of competition. Now, they, they are offering discounts that would be better than the average consumer could get walking into a retail location, but I can always beat their prices.
Having been an Apple educational rep, I find that disturbing because it used to be the push through the door for the educational to get these computers in there. Now they feel like they, they're there. Solid. They're in. Spot of the education.
And it's part, and it's, and it's part of the also with the consortium is when they're only dealing with one vendor, once you get a, an organization invested into a certain specific vendor, they know they have you and you're going to keep coming back to them. So with using basically shopping and putting, putting vendors up against each other, I'm able to get better pricing. Four-four-four. This is every three years where, this is actually what we were talking about was with the three-year purchasing plan. Every three years, basically it breaks down to we borrow a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but we pay it over three years. This allows us to do our bulk purchasing. So every three years, I'm able to replace approximately a third of our oldest hardware as well as expand on new infrastructure and new hardware. This includes anything from laptops, desktops, additional servers, maybe new networking technologies, interactive classroom technologies. One that we've been talking about lately a lot is projectors and interactive whiteboards in classrooms. And this would be the means of doing that. Count five-eighty. This is a bundle pack for the NISTI Krista McAuliffe Conference, which is one of the largest education technology conferences in the United States. Takes place in, this year actually in Manchester, previously it's been in Concord. But I buy a ten-pack and that allows either one teacher to spend ten days at NISTI events or what we usually do is we send one teach, ten teachers the one day to a NISTI event. It doesn't have to specifically be the Krista McAuliffe Conference. They have all kinds of events throughout the year. And it's usually focused, it's peer taught, so it's usually other teachers teaching teachers about classroom technologies and what the latest trends are in educational technology. It's one, it's one of the things I really look forward to every year, seeing what's new and what, what other schools are using and what vendors now have out for, for education. Six-ten. This is consumables, mainly things like CD, discs, DVDs, waste toner cartridges, cleaning supplies for digital equipment, projector bulbs, and just standard office supplies for the technology department. Six-four-one is a software account. We recently purchased the new Windows operating system. And a lot of our educational software is not compatible with Windows Seven. It was made for either Windows Two Thousand or Windows XP. So part of our plan to migrating the Windows Seven is the need to replace that incompatible software with new updated software for our students. Six-forty-one is a training and certification for myself and our tech, district technician. With advancements in technology happening continually, requires both myself and our technician to stay current with industry certifications. Six-forty-three is our services and subscriptions. This includes subscriptions to software that's used pretty much district-wide, such as our web filtering, spam and antivirus for our email system, data backup and retention program, our Novell School License Agreement, McAfee, which is our any, desktop antivirus solution, as well as antivirus solution for our network storage. One Communications is our internet access. Grouplink is the district, school district's technology help desk. United Streaming is an educational streaming multimedia service. Infinite Campus is our student information system. And SNAP is our student health system.
Right, new question?
The One Communications Internet Access, how long is the contract for?
I would typically sign, I believe, a three to five year. I think we were in a five year and we're at the end of our fifth year. We've resigned with them. And with the resigning of them, we are, we are going to be able to move to a VoIP-based phone system, voice-over internet protocol, as well as double our internet bandwidth.
I was going to say, my experience with One Communications with my business is that we switched to another company and we had a higher band rate and a lower price.
We looked at the, the other provider for the area, Bay Ring, and they did beat the, our original price, but when it came to implementing a new telephone system, the cost was much higher.
Matt, I don't see anything here unless it's inclusive in the six-fifty category. Microsoft for, like Microsoft Word, Excel, or any of those, Microsoft Office. What are they using for word processing?
We purchased all of that last year. We bought a volume license for the school district for both the operating system and Microsoft's Office Suite.
Okay, so you're currently using the site license product?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Seven-thirty-nine is replacement equipment. This is to replace equipment that is lost to normal attrition. Obviously, if things get used, they break. Most of the, the increased age of our end-user equipment requires an increase in this account to replace items that are either too old or to be compatible with newer systems, as well as items that are not repairable. Such as, a good example of that would be a lot of parts on PCs are replaceable, but if your monitor goes, that's not serviceable, so.
Basically, they're always.
Yeah, it goes to recycle. It gets recycled. The next cost center is page... Forty, yep. And again, you'll see the repeat of these account numbers. And the descriptions are, are pretty, are the same. There is account number that's different here. This is twenty-two-thirty-three-one-twenty-four. Requesting a part-time desktop technician to replace the full-time position we lost in the oh-eight, oh-nine school year. The loss of our engineer meant, meant that the current desktop tech has been trained and has taken on engineering responsibilities. With thirteen-hundred user network, eight-hundred-plus nodes, a node is any, any, any technology device that requires network service. So PCs, desktops, laptops, printers, switches, routers, the list, the list goes on. And two IT staff makes providing high availability and professional development logistically and feasible. Especially a forward movement towards a twenty-first century education environment is the goal of the school district. This amount that I requested is for a thirteen, thirteen dollar an hour rate at twenty hours a week, and this amount also includes FICA.
Any benefits?
Any benefits? No, I, I'm assuming with part-time that we're not going to be giving any benefits.
No paid holidays, no vacation time?
Probably federal holidays. What, are there thirteen of those? I'm assuming the standard federal holidays. I don't believe we'd be giving vacation time, though.
Okay, so we would take that hourly rate based on twenty hours?
Yeah, and that's on, that's on fifty-two weeks. That's on a, a whole entire year. And basically working twenty hours a week, fifty-two weeks. So on a, on a federal holiday, he would still get his four, his four hours of pay.
I have a question. I just don't quite understand this. It says that this is a part-time desktop technician to replace a full-time position. But it doesn't show up above.
Because it was cut out two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Why was it cut out two years ago?
The budget committee. The budget committee made the cut. Two-nine-two. These are funds used for professional development for teachers to take courses. Oh, wait, this is... Oh, this is course reimbursement.
Right.
If I want to take grad courses, well, I, I don't need that anymore. I'm graduating actually in December, so. I don't need reimbursement anymore.
You already saved us money.
I saved you guys money, yeah.
Thank you so much.
So that comes out right away, huh?
You're in the right direction. Where the contract, right?
Uh, count three-hundred. This is, I'm sorry, question, yes?
Is, is that position, that's not part of the bargaining unit, right? So...
As far as the union?
Yeah.
No.
Is there, is there an ongoing expectation for professional development, for course reimbursement, that sort of thing?
Well, as far as this account here, the two-nine-two, that's individually contracted with me. It's part of my employment contract that the school district will help me work on my masters.
And now you're going to be made out of time.
Three-hundred. Again, this is the outside contracted support. And the description is the same as the other cost center at the elementary school. And this apply, this is one of those accounts where the rule of one-sixth applies. Where one-sixth comes out of the SAU. Two-sixth comes from the elementary school and three-sixth from the junior, senior high. Four-thirty, this is equipment repair. Again, this is to replace parts in PCs, other hardware, printers, that, that are serviceable. And the main, the main reason for the increase, though, in this account is we've increased the amount of laptops. And having more laptops in production increases repair costs because laptops are more costly, their parts are more costly. So the benefit of mobility comes with the extra cost as far as hardware because they are more expensive to maintain. Uh, count four-four-four. I'm sorry, was it?
Yeah, your question?
This is the, the computer lease and this would be the junior, senior highs, part of that lease. They're basically half of it.
When you, wait a minute. I thought we bought these.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should, I should rephrase that loan. The, the financial loan. We borrow a hundred and twenty thousand dollars every three years, but we spread the payments over three years. That way there's not a big balloon. So that one year, you know, you want a hundred laptops and all of a sudden your budget increases by sixty thousand dollars just to do that. That can be built into here and then it's spread out over three years.
So is this a lease to own through the vendor or is it financed through?
We finance through a bank.
How does the school district incur a three-year obligation without the budget, without the voters approving it that specifically as a warrant article?
I mean, I, I, I understand that the school district can't do capital improvement program, which is where you would set aside the money over a three-year period to do the purchase at once. But you might want to make sure that's consistent with your authority.
Yeah, because you...
I, I mean, it's the right way to do it, but I don't understand how that works, so. Because if next year the budget, the budget's cut enough, you have an obligation that you have to meet that's never been approved. Unless that contract says.
It has some sort of an escape clause in it.
Which, which would be unusual for a company to accept.
Well, I don't think a bank would do that, yeah. I don't know. This has been a process that was in place.
That's a very interesting question.
Last year. Was this the last year?
We're in the last year right now of it.
I know on the town side, it's anything five thousand dollars or more has to be approved through a certain process. I had another question on that.
Well, that's forbidden. This is separate. This is a different issue.
Okay.
Another general question?
Yes.
If, if the additional personnel were supported through the budget process, do you anticipate that that would reduce your outside IT support?
Uh, no, I don't. We're, we're severely understaffed as it is. The state, state regulations put our IT staff at seven. Having two is, well, a lot less than seven. So I don't, I don't, I wouldn't see a reduction in outside support. Outside support is really seriously used for expertise. You can think of IT as the same as the medical field. I'm your general practitioner. I'm the person you go to first when you're not feeling well. And I assess you, and if it's something beyond my control, I seek expert help. And this is what those accounts are used for, so. That was four-four-four. Okay, five-eighty. Again, this is the portion of the junior, senior high purchase of the Krista McAuliffe in NISTI event conference. Six-ten is consumables again. Six-forty-one is for self-study guides for certifications. Previously, in previous years, they had budgeted over twenty-five hundred dollars in this account. But that was, most certification classes meant travel. And at this point in time, a lot of stuff that we certify for, we can do online. So it's a huge reduction because we don't have a travel expense anymore. Six-forty-three, this again is our information services expense. Including, this includes everything like our firewall, web filtering, antivirus, our licensing for our network infrastructure products from Novell. Six-fifty. This is software purchasing, and this would be the junior, senior highs portion of purchasing, purchasing new educational software. And this would include, though, the move to a new library management system as well as looking at the possibility of using new budgeting software. Currently, one of the things, the library management system is that one is not, it's server-client based, which means that the software runs on a server, but requires there to also be a piece of software installed on the individual computers for students to look at what's in the library. We'll move to a web-based solution, which will allow anyone to, any student to search both the elementary and junior, senior high libraries with a computer that has an internet connection. It wouldn't actually require software to be installed on the computer. And currently, our system is not centralized database, meaning that if I'm a high school or junior high student, I can't search the elementary school library for a book and vice versa. They're separate. Moving to a new system would allow that to be centralized. And students would be able to know what's in both libraries without having to travel to either one, so. Seven-thirty-three is new lab furniture for the computer lab at the junior, senior high. Over the summer, we rewired the lab. That include new electrical and network cabling, as well as new outlet pulls. The current configuration of the room is, is some, is a U-shape with basically a row of computers in the middle of the, of the horseshoe. And the way it's set up right now, the room only allows for twenty-four seats, with only twelve of them actually facing the front of the class. With the new wiring that we did, we can re, we completely redo the room with new furniture so that it can seat twenty-eight seats and twenty of those seats would actually be facing the front of the room. Seven-thirty-seven is for new chairs. Seven thirty-seven is for new chairs in the technology office, as well as a dry erase board. Seven thirty-nine is another equipment replacement account. And account eight-ten is mine, and our district technicians dues to the NISTI organization. The next cost center starts on page fifty-one. And this is the SAU. One twenty-five, that's my salary. Account three hundred, this again is the SAU's portion of the outside contracted support. Account four thirty is the district's portion, the SAU's portion of repairs and maintenance. And four four four, it would be the SAU's portion of the, I guess I should return that, it's not lease, uh, computer, the technology capital loan, I guess. That's, I guess, yeah, are there any questions?
No, next page.
Oh, there's another page?
Yep.
Oh, look at that.
Pretty much the same stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty much the same stuff we've said several times, but, there's more money.
There's more money, okay. I'm looking for any accounts that stand out.
The, I'll jump down to eight-ten, the membership. On the previous, in, in the junior, senior high school, you mentioned that that was for you and Ryan, and get this money here, so, is it a combination?
Yeah, we moved those, uh, yeah, the one hundred dollars covers both of our fees to be members of the organization. And we removed.
Okay.
We removed those portions, yeah, from the elementary and the SAU.
Okay.
Okay, the only question I have is, if I were to, after going through everything you just went through, Matt, if I wanted to see the bottom line, what the total cost to operate the IT department, solely that department, where would I find that?
In the front, the beginning of the document, on page... Six. I believe it makes up, the total function is two-point-two percent of the school district's budget.
The table at the top, right in the middle. It takes the technology function across the three cost centers.
Did you do this in Excel or something?
I'm reading that right.
I'll buy him some pizza and beer, come to my office.
Okay.
I said the increase, if I'm reading it right, is twelve point seven.
That's the increase.
The increase over this current year budget is twelve point seven percent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Matt, I just have a, a general question. And that is, as I look at all the line items in your budget, there are many of the same line items in the town budget. And my question is, have you sat down with the town's IT department?
Doug Pullen?
Pardon?
Doug Pullen?
Yep.
Yeah.
And gone through budget items, line items, to find out where savings might occur either through volume, or where consolidation would work, or, and I would say the same thing with the library, because you talked about connecting the libraries up. How far outside your budget have you gone to look at opportunities like those?
Uh, as far as my understanding was, that the, the town's budget wasn't associated with the school district's budget. I mean, Doug and I meet regularly and speak about technology concerns regarding both the town and the school district. But we really honestly haven't sat down and looked at opportunities. One can think, I can think of that came, was an event, was when the town moved the fiber optic connections. The school district was originally a part of that, but in the last minute, the town budget, I don't know, the town's budget committee decided that it was the school district's responsibility to pay for their own fiber optic connections. So we actually waited a whole entire year and then footed our bill to move to fiber optics. So, in the past, there hasn't been a track record of that type of...
Thanks.
Yes, Brian?
The library management software that you mentioned sounded pretty interesting. Would it make sense for the town to use the same software? And that way, the town's library is also searchable?
Yeah, I would leave that discussion to the actual librarians. I'm not, I'm not going to be in the position to make, I, I really...
To make sure we have that conversation, I understand that need.
At that, I think that's what Brian was going, have that conversation.
I think they are basically two very different systems, but it would be nice if there's some ability to interface, but it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, because you're expanding the capacity of research for the students.
Yeah, well, the new, newer, newer-based library management systems, isn't, just because you've chosen one vendor as your library management system, doesn't exclude you from the capabilities of searching other libraries through interloan. As well now with the internet, I mean, they can search for anything they want. And we've looked, they've already looked at three or four different vendors. I basically went to the librarians with what my technical specifications were for a new system. I wanted a hosted solution. I don't want it to be an in-house, I want, they call it SaaS, software as a service. Where not only are we purchasing the software, but we're also asking the vendor to host the solution for us. That makes my requirement only to make sure I maintain an internet connection. My second criteria was that it was web-based. I don't want to have to deal with individual licensing or installation of software and maintenance of that software on individual computers. And really beyond that, there was some other technical stuff, but beyond that, it really left it up to the librarians to choose what they felt comfortable with. And so far, they've examined three different products. They do have a favorite in mind, but we're still, we're still going to assess at least one more product, and then call at least two of them back for a final review again, before they make a selection. I'm sorry, excuse me?
The internal librarians, not, not the town librarians.
Not the town, no, the internal librarians, yeah.
Matt, when you stated a minute ago about the fiber optic and, you know, the town pullout, how long ago was that?
Uh, we moved to fiber optics, um...
In nineties?
No, 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 no. I've, I've been here for six years, and we moved to fiber optics four years ago.
Just four years ago?
Yes.
So that, I, I'm not going to try to say where the blame was, but I think that was, at the time, the town side was going through a new administration, you know, that whole process, so, I, I would encourage, from a budget, uh, budget committee member's standpoint, to have that dialogue.
I mean, there are, I mean, there are examples of, of towns and cities in New Hampshire that, I don't know any that have a full integration of that type. I know Manchester is contemplating it, but I also know that the technology support for a town operations is a lot different from a school district, and there's a lot of fear about how a lot of funds or support might be transferred to one side or the other, and someone gets left out. I, I, I just, I mean, there, you can read, there's a lot of information about the Manchester going through that and the discussions regarding that.
Let's learn from their mistakes.
Wait for them to do it, and then...
Typically, what happens too, Dana, is that regardless of whether it's town or schools, there's always insufficient staff to really provide responsive tech support, and so, both, both sides are doing their best to scramble to keep things operating properly. But it still doesn't mean you can't look for opportunities to save some money together.
No, I, I agree.
Matt, you, you don't have anything to do, or do you have something to do with the television portion side of this?
Uh, I really act as basically the liaison for the school district with the Channel thirteen. Previously, when there was an actual Channel thirteen operating committee, I was a permanent member of that committee, as well as in its final year, I chaired it.
Okay, and the reason why I asked that question, in the CIP meeting that I attended yesterday, I was a rep on the budget committee, there was discussion, or there was a request coming from the town side to get a mobile television station, I don't know what they call it, but...
I sent that forward to Ed, I don't know how far it got.
Right, and it's being requested, and the discussion was, well, what is the school doing? And the comment, we had heard, but the school's not interested. Well, I would think the school would be interested in this.
Well, that, whoever, whoever mentioned that comment's definitely uninformed. We're very interested.
So that's...
Maybe we're not taking, talking about the same thing, but I sent a memo to, to the town administrator, I think it may have gone down his desk yesterday. Proposing a, a partnership, if you will, to create, to get the equipment, to, to create a mobile unit that would benefit both the school system and the town. And by the cable contract, all that the schools are entitled to is ten thousand dollars a year paying each January of the contract. This being the first year, ten thousand would have been eligible for us as of last January, we've not done anything with it. And this January, there'd be another ten thousand dollars. So, so the proposal that I sent on to Ed was, was roughly twenty thousand dollars, that twenty thousand, here's what the district would want to do with it, the kind of equipment we'd purchase, plus we'd pay for the salaries that would be necessary and the expertise. But that to really make it fully operational, I would ask that the town purchase some additional equipment, which was primarily two camera setups. And, and arguing that, that, that's a win for the town as well. It wouldn't have to be purely used by the schools, that the mobile setup can be mobile to any town event, and that's, that, that enhances the programming for the community, so.
And it's a shared cost.
Shared cost, and minimal cost, I think the total, I think again, it was around twenty to twenty, it was around...
Twenty-four.
It was around twenty thousand for us, and I, and I think about fourteen thousand for the town. But again, looking at some cable contract money to do that, so that was something I thought you were talking about, right?
That, that is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and I sent that forward.
And the follow-up to that is, how quickly would the school district be prepared to act upon such an adventure?
We, we, we've already got, you know, the quotes on the equipment, and that's what was the basis of the memo. We have certainly the personnel in hand, ready to start work. So to me, it's really get to January, when we're authorized for an additional ten thousand dollars, and let's have all our ducks in a row so that we can start in January.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Matt. And congratulations on your masters.
Oh, thank you.
You'll get it.
Confirmed until December, so...
It's counting. You got, you got a month.
It's counting. Okay, I and Pat are going to go through some of the SAU board accounts. Obviously, you've already gone through some, you've, you've heard from the special ed director, she's dealt with it, you just heard from Matt, he's done technology. So the, the first, the first place to take you to is page fifty. And this function is the staff development function. Staff development, as I, I mentioned to you before, is, is headed by Pat. As you see there in the description, she does more than curriculum and staff development, but she does all the state and local assessment programs, and handles grants for the district. Account five eighty is, allows her to attend conferences and workshops, excuse me. And, and to a variety of curriculum development organizations. Account six-ten, there's no, no descriptive there, but I'm sure it's materials for curriculum development and staff development programs, right?
Yeah, basic supplies, when we have a conference or workshop here that I have to use, any kind of technology we have to pay for, that's all in there.
Six forty-three is for curriculum, curriculum mapping activity, and I'll let, I'll let Pat tell you more specifics about both of them. But you see that there's an increase there of thirty-five hundred dollars, and that's for this web-based system called Alex, which is really, we've been using since the summer, and it's really proved to be a real benefit to us in instructing students, but, Pat, I'll let you talk about both of these things.
Okay, the curriculum mapping piece is the first part, and that's in the budget. That is a web-based program where my teachers, K to twelve, are able to organize their curriculum online, so that they can reach it at home. They can bring it up in a department meeting and look at who's teaching what. It allows us to attach our curriculums to the state and federal standards for whatever the content area is. If it's math, we can develop a lesson and make sure it's attached to standards that we need to meet for each particular grade level. Part of that no child left behind agreement that we have. It's teacher, user-friendly most days. The teachers are allowed to sit, and they enter their curriculum, they enter their lessons, they enter the vocabulary. They can put in links to, you know, resources, such as other internet links. The United Streaming that Matt spoke to, we're allowed to put in links to that, so that in front of them is their, their curriculum for the month. They can bring up for the whole year, but they do it month by month, basically, or unit by unit. And everything is there in front of them, they can copy and paste from other documents to get it into their curriculum. It has just been taken over by the State Department of Ed, before it was web-based outside of New Hampshire Department of Ed. So we're working through that transition. It hasn't been as smooth as we had all hoped. The technology part is still a little bumpy, and it's not our technology, it's just making the transition. Staff at the high school has had more experience with it, they're a little more comfortable with the process. The elementary school is, is still working on getting theirs online. The, do you have any questions about that part before I go to Alex?
So, again, this is a web-based product.
Product, right.
And it's a lease, you know?
We pay a certain amount. We used to pay per teacher license, and now we're, we're over a certain amount of teachers, so they base it on population, which is actually cheaper for us. When you have between zero and fifty, the numbers were a little high as far as cost-effective. But now that we've based it on population, K to twelve, and before, it was only based on population of the junior, senior high school. Now that we've added the elementary school staff in, it makes the, the numbers a little bit easier.
So that's something that's accessible from anywhere where there's internet?
Yes, wherever they, that's why having their laptops this year has been a big boon to them, because they can take them over the summer, work on them, they don't have to, you know, be site-based right here.
I, I have a question. Is it your department that is responsible for K through twelve to meet the academic standards for the state?
Correct.
Thank you.
If you look in the back, for example, at the organizational chart, you'll see, you'll see Pat oversees that, and then the principals obviously take leadership responsibility, too.
Alex is the, is the new, the new boy in town here. It's, we tried it out, it's a web-based mathematical program for students who are struggling, it started out with students that were struggling with math proficiency. However, we've extended the program so that students that would just like to increase their understandings can also get online. We, we bought, at the beginning of the school year, we bought one hundred licenses, we bought fifty at one building, and fifty at the other building. We used it as a pilot this summer, in summer school at the junior, senior high, and people were very pleased with it. The program is constructed so that you have a pre-assessment for students' skills and understandings. And then the person, the student goes online and does practice problems. It, it then does assessments, there's a post-assessment when you think you've completed your, your, close to your target area. It's not used independently, there is a teacher, we have a math lab at both the junior high level, middle school, and at the high school level. A teacher uses one of their regular classroom periods to sit with close to twenty-five students, and goes over specific areas that need to be enhanced for, for any individual that needs that help. In the fall, we, we're done with our trial period, which was free, and as I said, we purchased fifty licenses for each building. And students in grades three, four, and five now have access to the program, and then it's used at the math lab as I said. And then it's used at the math lab, as I said, at the middle school and at the senior high school for 25 students at each level.
This sounds to me like something that might be pretty critical with trying to get the proficiency numbers up for a state assessment exam.
Well, exactly.
Yeah, when we looked at the program, the program's content area is based on our New Hampshire state standards. That was one of the reasons we went for it, and it tied in very nicely with some of the math strategies we were already looking at and changing and putting a focus on. Having the staff being able to access assessment data from another assessment that we use here in the district. We were able to identify certain focus areas for individual students that needed guidance and more practice and more reinforcement in a smaller setting even sometimes. This Alex program allows them to work on that set of focused skills so that they can move on and have a better, better foundation before they move on to more complex concepts. They can access at home, once they have a password, your, your child can access the program at home to work on. So it kind of works at its own speed. And then post-assessments kind of move the student along.
And Pat, you said you just now got the licenses on this.
We started in September.
Having raw data insofar as how it's actually working.
No, my only, I've been in to observe, and we, we do see some progress with students. I find them very motivated because it's all online. It's their world, they're very used to, you know, sitting in front of the keyboard and looking at questions. When they need help, for example, there's a little box that comes up on the side and it explains it again. And one of the pluses of using this program at the junior, senior high is I've been able to use the junior and senior honor society members to come in and do a little tutoring on the side. So it's kind of been a win-win for everybody. They're getting some community service and extra help, and it's been very good.
At the end of the day, there is a, a process to do an assessment of what they've actually.
Yes, when you finish each level of a concept, when you finished work on reviewing a concept, you, you have to do the assessment before you can move on to the next level.
Right, but what I'm getting at is that you, as maybe the administrator, you can see at the end of the quarter.
Yes.
At the end of the school year, to how that program measured out for each of the students that were participating.
Correct, both myself and all the instructors are able to go in at any time and see individual progress, group progress, and then individual building progress on how students are doing on particular standards, not just progress on math.
Pass the board.
Mm-hmm.
Does this 3,500 represent wanting to purchase more licenses? Is that what you're hoping to do?
Yes.
But, but this year, it is funded through a grant.
Yes.
So, so the initial, the initial in the summer was free. This year, grant, that's why it doesn't appear in district dollars, but can't be the grant going forward.
And as advertised, it's a program that is tied to the state standards, which makes me think there's some sort of an endorsement that it's well tied with expectation to improve the proficiency.
Right, right on target, absolutely.
And so, and this is beyond just basic computational teaching. At the elementary level, maybe it's long division, what have you.
It's, that's more practice on facts, numeracy, place value. And then it increases as you go through the middle school and high school.
Into algebraic things and statistical things and things along those lines.
So what does this 3,500 dollars represent then? If it's covered by a grant?
It was covered by a grant this year. It won't be.
This year.
Right.
That's why it doesn't show in this year's budget, even though we're using it this year.
But the $3,500 for next year is to buy additional licenses.
Yes, I have to renew.
Is there a cost for?
Renew them, renew them, right?
Right.
So they're renewable?
Correct.
Okay, so the 50 you already purchased, wouldn't that be $7,000, 35 for, for additional? And the renewal of what you currently have?
I just got $3,500 this year from a grant to purchase 100 licenses for a year. I have to renew that at $3,500 for next year.
Think of it as a subscription.
Right, I'm just renewing my subscription.
Right, okay, all right. It's not on, it's not additional on top of what we're doing now.
Okay.
It's really just a replacement.
It's just maintaining what I've got.
Yeah.
Okay.
A question, sure, I have a few. Health insurance, 211, it says.
We're on this subject, Alex.
I know, but 20,000, almost $21,000 for health insurance?
You're getting into HIPAA areas about at least in the past.
That's $21,000 for health insurance for one individual? Am I reading this correctly?
Oh, you say 21,000?
Yes, I, I understand that. I, I would say. Pardon me?
She can answer that, yes. It is one person.
Yeah, it is. I mean, that's the only individual that's employed in this position. That's the district share.
So. 21,000.
It's all based on whether it's an individual, a couple, or a family. And it's multiplied times 12 months, divided times the percentage that the district pays. So it's not, one particular person's more expensive than another person.
You like, I can provide you with a sheet that shows our rates, if you haven't already seen it.
Can you remind us of the co-pay percent, like the, how much the town, the school pays percentage-wise of the monthly premium versus the employee? Is it 90-10 or?
I think.
Well, depends on the higher date.
Depends on the higher date. For some, it's 90-10, for others, it's 85-15.
And, and I guess to expound on the higher date piece, is the board has been very interested in having the employees share more of the burden. So we've been making incremental change in that towards less district contribution. Do you have other questions, or do you?
Not really, but move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, in terms of staff development, just the last thing purely is just dues to professional organizations, which small enough. If you turn to page 52, at the very bottom, there's an assessment function, which is really just one account. Want to speak to that? Use that money.
This last account is an assessment tool called Northwest Education Assessment. We all know it is NIOA here in the district. It's used for assessing students in grades two to nine, between two to three times a year. It's dependent upon which building gets it two to three times a year. It's an assessment piece that gives us data on children's understanding of math and reading. It's attached, again, to our New Hampshire state standards so that the questions all have to, are all focused on those standards. It also gives us an individual printout of a child's progress from year to year, which is really good for parents to be able to see, as well as a student. We use it for writing all kinds of learning plans. Teachers use the data to inform their instruction, which is one of the reasons we like it. When we give this assessment, it's done on the computer. All students take it either in a computer lab or at the junior, senior high school. We reserve two or three mornings where they just take this assessment on a computer. It's based on your individual level of proficiency. For example, if we're all sitting at a computer taking this assessment, it would start out with about seven to eight questions to level off to your proficiency level. So you'd all be looking at different questions if this were reading. And it moves along, and the minute you miss three or four in a row, then it drops you down a level to a more comfortable level and then starts getting gradually higher again.
So this is the one I'm thinking that you get, you get feedback immediately.
Immediately, 24 hours later, we have feedback from this assessment for our teachers to use.
Different from the kneecap, which we wait months to get our raw scores.
Half a year.
And then more months to find out if we're proficient or in need of improvement.
And with that, we're able to do it two or three times a year, so we can really.
And, and respond with program.
Changes.
Changes, rather than having to wait for multiple years, really, to see how our impact to, our programmatic curriculum changes are in the kneecap.
And the cost doesn't change depending on how many times a year I give it. I can give it up to four times a year, and the cost is still the same, whether I give it once or the, or the four times.
And you can pick any subject?
I can only, we only do reading and math. There are other subjects available, but we do just reading and math in the district.
Okay, let me move on. The next function is School Board Services on the next page. At, in the beginning, you see there are a number of salary object lines that are, that are basically either hourly payments or stipends. There's a stipend paid to the school moderator for the election and deliberative session. Stipends to three supervisors of the checklist, as well as tally clerks. Obviously, we produce our, our school board meetings on channel 13, so we need funds to pay that channel operator. The board employs a secretary to produce minutes of its meetings. The district has a treasurer to sign checks. And then four board members each receive a $1,000 stipend, while the chair receives a stipend for $1,250. And you get into the, the 300s, the 380. Both the school board and myself have, have reason at times to consult with the school district attorney, so these cover legal matters. 381, these expenses for the annual meeting, but they're producing district reports, creating ballots, mailing labels, supplies, and so forth for voting days. 382, we have an annual audit done of our books. 540 is advertising for the various things we have to do, be it openings in positions or going out to bid and other legal notices that we have to, are required to, to publish. 580 is travel for school board members to attend workshops and conferences.
Can we back up to the 540, advertising, 15,000 for the school board?
Say that again? To which one?
Advertising at 540?
Yes, yep.
15,000 for the school board? What is the school board advertising?
No, that, that, it's under School Board Services, but a lot of it is advertising for positions. And, and, and when you go out to, to bid, sometimes you have to, you have to put them in the paper, and there are other legal notices, notices in district meeting.
When you say bid, I mean, are you talking about teachers, hiring teacher? Why wouldn't that be on administrative costs?
I couldn't answer you there, except I know this is where the, the, the advertising account is. You're right, in other places, I've seen it under the SAU. Let's see. And it's not. So this is the sole account for advertising for the district.
Because do you need?
You know, in the, in, at the end of it all, it's really the board that employs these people, and so that's probably why it's there.
In the end, is it really the board's?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Because they have to approve of the position to be filmed, right?
Right, right.
Okay, got it.
Right.
Makes sense.
Yep. The 810 account provides memberships for the Newmarket School Board, Variety, New Hampshire State School Boards Association, and I can't remember what SES is, but then Municipal Association. So there are memberships that the district benefits from, by the board being members of these organizations. 840 is a, is a contingency account for unanticipated emergency situations. I'm not really familiar with that account more than to say that, but obviously, it's a. Every budget, you take on elements of risk, and you need to be able to respond to those risks within your, the means of your budget, and I think that's why that's there. 890, the account purchases, which are incidental during the year, and you see the list, it's there. Appreciation gifts for retiring staff, various awards, staff luncheons, but fees for associated with other services, not directly related to instruction. Land appraisals, wetland delineation, so it's a, it's a variety of different expenses that could come out of that, that account. 891, from time to time, people will pay us checks. Typically, it's individual parents, and I'm not talking, and to pay, to pay certain bills that they've incurred. And then the checks, as we go to deposit, are returned unpaid, and yet we've still got a bill. So there's a small amount of money, what was it, $200 to cover any unpaid, unpaid debts. Any questions on School Board Services? Brian?
Would it be possible to get a history of legal services for the past five years? And for contingency? Not the specific expenditures, but the total amount? So we can, I like truth in budgeting, and if the contingency is 25, but the most that's ever been spent is 10, then it shouldn't be 25. And if legal services have always been beyond 10, it should be budgeted beyond 10.
For, for legal services, and what was the other one?
Continency.
Contingency, okay.
How many years?
Well, I don't know, it's five.
Five.
I mean, that, that would be, that should be relatively simple.
The legal expenses, you know, just to speak to a little bit now, when we're doing a contract negotiation year, that, that'll have a, a piece to it. Sometimes there are personnel matters that incur legal expenses.
Right, you're, yeah, you're currently delaying.
An example, next year, we will be negotiating a new successor contract to the one we're in now.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Okay, I'll get you.
Town council experience that it's unpredictable, but there's baseline data, and if you know there's a contract next year, then it's going to be more than 10, I would assume. You could probably pull from the data and say, this is, this is the attorney we use for the contract, and we spent 16,000.
Yeah, I mean, look at the last year actual, but, but we've got some legal matters that are pressing.
Right, I understand that.
Still pending, so.
And, I mean, I, there is legal expenses with, you know, making sure that any contract negotiated is up to legal muster. However, I would point out that we didn't really require, we didn't hire a negotiator for the district. We've, the last several contracts, we've negotiated very amicably without a lot of legal expense, so. Yeah, I'm really happy to be able to report that, hoping we can continue in that, in that flavor.
Anything else on School Board Services? Okay, let's turn the page. This is where you have the function, yes.
Jim, how many of these are we going to cover this evening? Because I was on the impression that this might be a short meeting, and we were just going to do the technology.
I think we're almost done. Honestly, I don't think we've got that much more to go. But I, my, my schedule showed it as technology and SAU.
Got to ask the questions, I mean, I just wasn't planning on.
You don't have to do a specialization.
Yeah, we, Dana, if, if we've got 10 minutes, I'll be surprised.
Oh, okay, good.
In SAU administration, you have a number of salaries there. There's my salary, there are secretaries that support the office, business manager salary. We pay a custodian to keep our portion of the building clean. And so you've got all of that salary.
How many secretaries?
Yeah, how many secretaries?
I believe there's three there.
Yeah, because I'm thinking that's one person.
No, gosh.
That's one person I mean.
Yeah, she wishes.
She'd be very excited.
Hopefully, she's not watching. But no, that's three, that's three positions. Yeah, which are the secretary to the superintendent, and the two that are in the business office. There's a fourth secretary in our office, and she is for the special ed, and she's budgeted under special ed.
Okay.
So then, let's see, I move down to 292. There are, some of those employees are eligible for college course reimbursement. 330 is, is again, a line that addresses cleaning of the SAU offices. 431, repair and maintenance of equipment that we have. Computer maintenance, software, typewriter maintenance, fire extinguishers, HVAC, variety of needs. 442, our copiers are under a lease agreement. 531, telephone service. 534, postage for any mailings. 580, a funds to attend conferences and workshops for any of those employees. 610, all the office supplies, you name it, runs the gamut. 612, our additional supplies particular to conducting meetings for the SAU. Expenses for the SAU office electricity are in, are in account 622. 624, I found to be very interesting. You, you may very well be aware of it, obviously, I wasn't, because I asked the question, well, why are we, why are we zeroed out on the heating and energy line? It's not comforting to employees to think that. But apparently, because of overpayments by the district in past years, we're paying more than our fair share, let's say, for heating and energy, that there is now an agreement that has us not paying that bill.
Who was that agreement with?
Pardon me?
Who was the agreement with?
It's been between the town, I mean, it's town hall and us, and apparently, for a good. and apparently, for a good number of years, from what I've been told, I don't know the exact, but quite a few years, we were not only paying our energy and heating costs, but a good part of, if not all of, that building. So it's a trade. That's why it appears as zero.
Under three seventy, negotiations, $2,000, I know it's not a lot of money. What's the negotiation? Is that part of the teacher's contract? Wouldn't that be illegal?
It may be, it may not be. You know, other expenses that I have seen in negotiations are things like printing of contracts. Could be a mediator that you wouldn't put under legal.
And it's a small amount.
Again, it's from a year, it's from a year ago, and if you notice, they only spend $898 out of it, but...
No, I'm just curious.
Yeah, those are the only, I mean, when I, typically, I've seen the legal expenses, plus typically, there's printing costs, there may be a mediator involved, and that's usually what is part of that expense. Account six forty-one provides various publications, certain journals that are really pertinent to the roles within the SAU office. Each, seven thirty, each year, we have tried to purchase one additional fireproof file cabinet. It's really important that our records be preserved. In fact, the law requires that it be preserved in fireproof cabinets. And then eight-ten is a dues and fees account, and it's professional memberships. Again, you've got a number of professionals that work out of this office, and they have a variety of organizations that it's really important that they belong to. Any questions on SAU administration? Okay, if you move to the next page...
I was being patient and letting somebody else go first.
Pardon me?
I had a question.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay. No, I was being patient and letting somebody else raise their hand. But the secretary salaries, can you help, and maybe you mentioned it and I missed it, why last year's actual was one hundred and three, this year's budget was 10,000 less?
That's a great question, and I don't have the answer. But I, the same thing popped out at me.
So was there a change in personnel?
Yeah, she had a retirement.
We had, we had somebody who retired, I don't know her salary, but it still doesn't, to me, it still doesn't jive, to be very honest.
Right, because if someone retired, you'd think they were at the higher end of the scale.
Yeah.
Than a new hire. But anyway, okay.
Yeah, I, I see it.
You work all summer.
I will tell you what, you know, when the new business manager comes on board, the twenty-second, it's one of the first things I'm going to say is, go through our staffing pattern, I want to double-check things like that. I want to check all the salary and benefit information to make sure we're accurate. Okay, because as we've perused this, we've seen a few lines of salaries that are incorrect, to be quite frank. But I wanted to make sure this reflected this binder, and that we'll make those corrections in subsequent budgets.
Okay. The other question or thing was on the fireproof file cabinets. I had to do quite a bit of research for my own organization, and we found a supplier of used, pretty much, you couldn't tell they were used, brand-new ones, for like half...
We can't hear you.
Fireproof file cabinets.
Well, if you can get me that information, I'd be happy to look at that.
Yeah, it's, I can't remember, is it Manchester, but I'll try to remember.
Do they still certify them?
I don't know about that.
Yeah, okay. But send me the information, I'd be happy to look at that.
I mean, we got, we got two for the price of a brand-new one.
Yeah.
Four drawer, fire king.
Okay, if you flip to page fifty-six. At the top, building maintenance, the only line that's there are insurances. This is the line that captures the expense for all of our property and liability insurance coverages. And as you see, it anticipates a 10% increase for next year. Under transportation, we have three transportation accounts. We are with First Student, and it's, and this is one I'll have to learn more about. It says it's level funded, if you look at that. And then there's the text that I was provided with, says a 5% increase, so I better learn more about that. But the contract actually expires in June 2010. So we'll need to get new numbers eventually for that. I'm sorry, that's right, it already happened. See, I think this may be an outdated comment, and that the actual numbers are accurate, that we're level funded.
Didn't we, we just negotiated that?
Yeah, I thought so.
That date was...
Yeah, all right. I think the comment's wrong, but the number's right.
Yeah, I don't know. Brian's question is, why is the last year's actual, as much as it is over the budgeted amount, it was a contracted expense, you would think we would have budgeted or realized an equal number there? Or is it...
One on your own, come on.
The bus...
Twenty-seven hundred, five-ten.
I guess maybe it's the contract is not, will provide the service for this much. It's if you use, every mile is this much, or something. I don't know.
If, if there were some, I think, I think you might be onto it.
I'll get, yeah.
It's a big change, but I think might, some of it might correspond to, you know, if, I don't know, if athletic teams make it further in playoffs or something, there's more trips to wherever, which adds up for what happens.
I'll see what information I can get for you. It's a good question. Uh, let's see. Surprise, surprise, special education transportation actually went down. I don't think I've ever seen that in all the years.
Well, I think, I think that speaks volumes to, or one of the reasons why it's so critical to try to do things within our district. And we've been successful with that, particularly with autism services.
And the career technical transportation is included in the contract that we have with First Student. It's described up in the five-ten account. Just budget it separately. Debt service, we have no debt. Transfers, you see the explanation that's there. The food service department finished last year with a deficit. And that's why you see a last year actual of $10,175 was to cover that deficit.
Do we know what contributed to that?
We couldn't cover all of our costs. You know, again, a good part of the costs come from sales, as well as subsidy programs, and we just could not cover our costs. And I imagine labor may have gone up as well, as health, those kinds of things.
Well, labor, you would anticipate...
Food costs.
Labor, you would anticipate in the budgeting process of a year, but the food costs, yeah, you probably know how much control on that.
Yeah, you don't.
Are the subsidies declining, like everything else in the state side?
Not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge, I don't know that.
The one thing I had noticed in this book, and I see it again here, that it's not here, is how do you purchase equipment when it breaks? I don't see anything for equipment for the kitchen. There's nothing budgeted, it doesn't seem like anybody's buying anything. And having a talk with the, who's, Dodds?
Linda?
Linda Dodds, wonderful woman. Indicated to me one time that she has to bother and, you know, go somewhere and swap something out. She indicated one day when I was in the kitchen, she had a piece of equipment she had to swap out to another entity, and got another piece of equipment from them. And it was a used piece of equipment. So again, I looked and I say, I don't see anything in there like replacing of trays or, you know, stuff like that. What happened?
By and large, that is within her budget, I believe.
Yeah, right.
That's the expectation.
Those are sort of perishables, they do break, and you just replace them.
Yeah, you have a good year and a really bad year.
Right. Again, it's the equipment I'm more concerned about. Are we keeping up with the equipment, because even that has a life on it, too.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, she, I mean, she has her own budget. This is just, we actually have to give her some money. We're anticipating having to give her money because she lost, she didn't have enough money within her own kind of standalone budget. So you won't see those details on...
Okay, but in this book, she has her own budget somewhere. Is that what you're saying?
No, she does. You don't see that in here.
Right.
Students pay for lunches that they purchase?
Right.
Or monies come from the federal free and reduced lunch program?
Okay, that raises a question in my mind. If that's revenue coming in to offset some of the costs she has, why is it not part of the budget where we can see it? I mean, she must be her own entity within the school.
You know, I don't know what to tell you. I know in my experience, you know, school boards, you know, sometimes will ask for that and have a report on that, but in terms of appearing in a district budget, there isn't an expense. It really is, it is the revenue that is generated by the sale of lunches, plus, again, the other reimbursements we talked about. That has to, she has to cover her costs, that is the...
But she's not in there as a sole proprietor, she's actually part of the school district.
She is, yes, a school district employee, as are the others. We hire, we hire the others, but the money that pays them doesn't come out of an appropriation that the town makes.
Right, because it's the revenues coming in to offset that cost. But again, I still don't see anything in there in the equipment.
That's in, that's in that budget as well.
That's in that budget as well.
All right, and that's an imaginary budget, because I don't see it.
Well, I think you can follow up on that, particularly if you have to subsidize that, it needs to show up.
It needs to show up, yeah.
Within your budget.
But we don't, I mean, we are here, that's why it's shown here in this transfer, that we're anticipating a problem. But by and large, the expectation is to be self-sustaining.
Right, but that's still, it's still a cost center within the district.
That's why he's showing it.
I'm showing the district's obligation.
You're showing the district's contribution, you're not showing that as a cost center within the district.
For example, in the town side, the water department budget is part of the operating budget passed by the voters, but its revenue covers it.
And, and...
I'm pretty sure.
And in the air...
I think you're right, Brian.
When you get our overall budget, there's kind of an in-and-out line item.
But it should be there.
Right.
But there's a mystery in it.
But we don't, but we don't have the detail of her...
But it should be.
But I see what you're saying, is, you know, as we're demonstrating, we're fundamentally responsible for the school lunch program. We should...
And we can, and we can, and we do budget, and we can report that out. It's just that, you know, I referred back to page three, just to refresh my memory. Page three talks about three different funds. Ten is the general fund. That's everything we've been dealing with. If you look at that chart on the bottom on the left-hand side on page three. Fund twenty, totally different fund, deals with food service. So there is an accounting mechanism, it's just that it's not something that's usually reviewed here. It never really goes to town for a vote at all, because it's money coming in and money going out. And then obviously, there are federal and state grants that we process as a different fund.
So the only thing we usually ever present is the general fund?
Is a general fund.
But if you are subsidizing that at the end of the day, it is a town vote.
You're absolutely right, and that's why this money is shown here. Up until this year, and I don't know how long it's been that way, but up until this year, it has been self-sustaining. This past year, it wasn't. I will tell you that I think it's been a while since we've increased lunch prices. And I recall if I've shared with the board, but at our next meeting, I've asked Linda Dodds to come to the meeting and give a two-month synopsis of financially, what was it like a year ago, September, October? And then what's it like September, October this year? So we might have some degree of anticipation of, is there going to be a shortfall? Do we need to raise prices as of January one? Is there something we need to do? So we're trying to be prudent with that, but I think, I know when Sue Caswell built this budget, she was trying to be prudent for next year, the what-if, the risk of if we don't cover that deficit, then what are we doing?
Okay, let me just go back one more step. Let's say Linda Dodds comes to you tomorrow morning and says, Jim, my refrigerator's gone, the big stainless steel institutional one, it's not repaired. Where does that money come to buy that?
I, you know, to be honest with you, I don't have enough familiarity with her, with her account. I will tell you that good food service programs have anywheres from two to three months of operating expense in their revolving account, so that they can absorb hits like that. Whether she has that, I really, I really doubt it, obviously, because she finished...
Just by that statement, a revolving account she may have, I believe that's something as a budget member would like to see, what that is.
Again, I'd have to learn...
Yeah, no, I agree.
I'd have to learn that piece about how it happens.
I mean, we gave you this feedback, and this is what we got, which is excellent. So, you know, it's all a work in progress.
Yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you answers to it, but at least next Thursday night, we'll get some basis of comparison of where were we a year ago, where are we now? Is it need to change course?
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have. Completes all the review of the elements in this budget.
Any final questions? Okay, well, thank you. It's great to have such great representation from the Budget Committee. Kat, you're doing well, hopefully, you're just watching us from home. And, thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Too late. The Budget Committee, we, this schedule that they came up with said that we were going to have a review of the budget on November thirtieth. We get it on November twenty-third or thereabouts. So do we want to schedule a meeting that night and formally start our process?
On the same day we get it?
No, November thirtieth.
On November thirtieth.
Which is a week later. Today's the tenth, so it's Tuesday night, Wednesday night. Right?
Yes, thank you.
No, it's a Thursday.
Yeah.
Tenth is Wednesday?
Hey, Brian, can I hear what you're saying?
So Tuesday.
Considering I need to be there, can I hear what you're saying?
No.
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 That's going to make it hard for you to be there, isn't it?
We want to meet on Tuesday, the thirtieth, as the Budget Committee to start our review.
By me?
I'm with her.
Same time, seven, seven?